Would like to call to order the May 6, 2019, Cabezas County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. It's good to have you with us tonight. First up is approval of the work session agenda, which you all have before you, including changes on page three. Do I hear a motion to approve the work session agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. First up, under Discussion Items from Infrastructure and Asset Management, is Courthouse Expansion Project Update, and we're happy to have Kyle and Jonathan for that.
Just wanted to give you an opportunity to kind of let you know the different parts of the courthouse expansion project that have been going on behind the scenes and I guess in front of the scenes at this point. The means abandonment was voted on by City Council on April 11th, so we are now with them approving that. We are moving forward with the actual owners of the Whataburger in terms of trying to figure out their parking lot and the redesign of that to get that blessing from them. We also have another two adjacent owners that we are working with also in the background. And if you have any specific questions on that portion of it, you can ask now if you would like. Just don't want to unpass anything, okay? Last week, we actually had the team kickoff meeting for the construction manager at risk project on the courthouse expansion, so we had ceiling architects, Messer Construction, and all of their subcontractors, so structural engineers, MEP engineers, all your different people that'll be doing your modeling for that project. We also had the members of the county staff, we had members from the Sheriff's Department, Communications and Outreach, Infrastructure and Asset Management, ITS, and the County Manager's Office in that group, and also had some city council, some city staff. So we had about 40 people in there and went through about a day and a half of getting to know each other, learning what is important to each of the different groups, what the priorities are, but also what will each group be assisted the most by in terms of deliverables from the other group. So for the construction team, you know, obviously, you know, realistic deliverables, realistic timelines. So they were able to communicate what they need to make this job successful, and the county was able to clearly put up and put our goals of what will make the project successful in our eyes. So it was a very good team building event moving forward and also put a lot of people that'll be working around different parts of the country in the same room at the same time. So it was very good. We've already set up a SharePoint site, which is where we'll be dumping a lot of our information into, so that'll be a site, an actual internet site, that the construction company and the architect and the county can use for sharing a bunch of different information, looking at different renderings, things like that. Our communications department, Kasia Thompson, is going to be working with Judge McGee on figuring out kind of a rollout process in terms of letting our end users or our internal customers over in the courthouse, how to let them know about different events that are coming up. So actual construction schedules, noise implications, things like that. So we're trying to kind of get that process ironed out, even though we're 10 months away from having to deal with that, so that we have all of our end users and we know how they wish to be communicated by, so when we need to get information out, we can get it out very quickly. The last part of what we're working on now is this week, we're actually having internal design review group meetings with the actual end user. So we've already had a meeting with the District Attorney's Office to kind of look at the final layout of their interior space and make sure that the flow is correct and that this hallway is wide enough, and asking some really in-depth questions that might not have come up in the programming of the space. And we'll be meeting with each of those end users throughout the next three days. Any questions about anything I just rambled off?
Just a general comment. I'm glad to see us gain some momentum and get it moving more than what it has been.
Yes, we have a lot to discuss, and the county manager, myself, and Jonathan have been talking a lot about some of the exterior portions of that complex and starting to have some high-level, and quite frankly, in the weed discussions with the different end users of those spaces, so we can start programming them, because we're going to need to come to those answers very quickly. As you know, to start the site enabling package in less than a year, we have to have a lot of things designed, because you actually have to have your GMP or your Guaranteed Maximum Price locked in. So it's very much, it's on our priorities right now, so we're going to be moving pretty fast towards a lot of those discussions.
Okay. I did have my opportunity to attend a little bit of that kickoff session, and I was extremely impressed with the communication and the spirit of the group. I think that's a wonderful exercise to get all those people in the room at the same time, and I'm sure that our other partners with the city and downtown are happy to be included in that beginning process. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, Jonathan.
I was just going to say two things. One, going back to that, one of the best exercises in there is when they asked each of the groups. So we had the construction group, the design group, and then the owners, and we each came up with what will a successful project be, list all the different things that we would define as making this project successful. And the given with every single group was that it was well-designed and well-built. It's like, no one really got, said those things. That was just absolutely assumed, even though we did discuss the fact to make sure that we were all clear on that. There was a lot of detail to that that I think we can share with you, that because this is such a huge project, it is such an important project for the community, and it really became clear from each aspect that the importance to the community was right at the top of the successful project list. And I think it's something that we don't take for granted, is how much of a landmark this is. It's a 50-year project, and so that was right at the top of the list. The second thing was Kyle talked about exterior, and I don't want to let that pass without saying there will be a very public process to review some of those exterior proposals so that we can get feedback from the public on that, again, back to that community importance and getting that input as part of the project.
And all of the notes that came out of that kickoff meeting, so all of the big sheets of paper you write down with markers and put on the walls and everything, all of that is being summarized, and I'll actually get that to the clerk of the board, and she'll get it out to all of you just as soon as I have it.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle?
We skipped over it before. There's a lot of utility work on Mean Street, which I assume you've just begun to sort of fish through with city staff?
We're in the process of scheduling those meetings. In terms of on the...
Underground.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you mean. Boots on the ground, meaning myself and their utility departments have met out there several times. I think some of the larger discussions that have to be had are timing and the implications of relocating or even terminating some of those services. So Mr. Downs is going to schedule some of those meetings, so we can start to have those conversations. The problem is, you cannot, there is no exact location to anything. They pulled out the one guy that thinks where he knows everything is, and we looked at everything, but even our surveys, what you're picking up is not guaranteed of what's in there.
And it's very similar with transportation. As we talk about Whataburger, and of course, they're exiting on the Means now, and we're looking at, you know, their entrance and exit will be on the Church Street. If you think about that, if you're going north on Church Street, when Means closes, there won't be a left turn lane any longer, so we won't have to worry about people going straight in the left turn lane. But, so that's going to change that. So we are actually meeting with DOT and City Transportation folks next week to start talking about what does Church Street look like, what does that do to the signal when we change that signal, what does it do to the surrounding signals? So it's all very detailed, intricate, infrastructure work.
I'm excited about that little piece of it. From the moment we talked about a courthouse, I wanted to have some green space associated with it. So it wasn't, that wasn't exactly what I envisioned, but I think that's actually better than what I had mine. So that's, I'm excited that they've at least seen what we saw and the benefit of it, and now it's just a matter of, you know, working out a lot of details. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we move to item 3.2 from Innovation and Technology, and we're delighted to have a report from Debbie Brennan.
Welcome to the first innovation report. Today, I'm going to give you an overview of the process we've initiated to help county employees meet everyday challenges, deliver quality services, and contribute to the success of Cabezas County. In future reports, I'm going to bring you employees and examples of their innovative ideas that were put into action to create value for our citizens. I'm very excited about the opportunity to help my coworkers think differently and tackle their everyday challenges. The county manager and I have been meeting with department's leadership to discuss three goals we want to achieve this year with our innovation initiative. The first goal is to create a culture of innovation. The primary strategy we're going to use for this goal is to educate and empower staff by providing opportunities for personal and professional growth. In April, we started a digital book club. Each month, we're selecting a book to read or listen to using the library's free resource, Hoopla, then having digital discussions on Microsoft Teams. The digital book club offers opportunities for employees to expand their coworker network and inform relationships across the organization. It also introduces the new Microsoft Office Module Teams, teaching staff to use the new technology resource in a fun, less intimidating way. In April, we had 50 employees join the digital book club, and we read the book or listened to the book, "I Moved Your Cheese," which is a sequel to the popular book, "Who Moved Your Cheese?" May's book is Phish, so if you want to download the book and listen and join the book club with us, I encourage you to do so. In our culture of innovation, all employees are being encouraged to turn opinions and suggestions into ideas. You know what they say about opinions, everybody's got one, and that's a good thing, if those opinions are channeled into changes that can create value for the county. All employees, citizens, customers have valid opinions based on their knowledge and experiences. Often, these people share their suggestions with us, which literally just throws the ball into somebody else's court. So an idea is an opinion that suggests constructive actions along with the reasons of why these actions make sense. So how do we change, turn opinions into ideas? First, we're going to have to educate and empower our employees and citizens to provide constructive feedback and suggestions. Then we have to determine if that suggestion can add value to the county. If we determine it can add value, then we have to determine how much it would cost, and if the value outweighs the cost, we've got a great idea that we need to work on. Our second goal is to expand and improve the use of existing resources. The primary strategy for this goal is to create opportunities for employees to become better subject matters and collaborate across the organization for continuous improvement. Let's face it, most employees are simply trying to keep up with their day-to-day job and their own processes, and they don't really have time to initiate or focus on innovative solutions. The problem, we often see innovation as scary and complex, because it's too disruptive, it's too risky, it's too hard. Educating and encouraging employees to be alert to new ideas that can be implemented with small actions will help take the scaries away and ultimately lead to big improvements. Kaizen is a Japanese word that translates into good change. In business, it refers to activities that continuously improve all business functions and involves all employees from the Board of Commissioners and the county manager all the way to the frontline employees. Building a culture of innovation and continuous improvement is a game of inches. Our culture shift is focused on engaging employees to find new ideas for implementing small changes that result in improvement for the county. Small changes can create big value. Our third and final objective for this year is to create operational dashboards for each department. I've asked each department to identify three measures that indicate their department is running smoothly. It's like taking your temperature. When you wake up in the morning, if it's 98.6, you get dressed and you go on to work. But if it's 104, you're going to, say, have to take some action, either take some medication and call the doctor and do something differently than just go on to work. This is an example of a dashboard we use to measure the health of the county website. As you can see, it was feeling pretty good that day that I took this snapshot. It was 96.2, not quite 98.6, and our benchmark score is higher than the government-industry average. But you can see on the line chart there, at one point in January, that green line dipped down below the government-industry benchmark, and we were having a problem with the website. Our hosting and content management system had a problem resolving links that day, but because of this dashboard, we knew and we were able to take action for a quicker resolution. This dashboard visualizes our accessibility on our website, and as you can see, we have a little work to do. It also helps us visualize the progress we've made in improving this area. We have some limitations with our website template on improving accessibility. Knowing this limitation, we were able to recently make a small change to increase accessibility on the website. We implemented an accessibility widget from userway.org, which segues us into the last slide here. On May 16th is Global Accessibility Awareness Day. On the county's website, you'll find a blue accessibility widget button in the lower left-hand portion of the screen, and if you click on that, the menu will pop up and it gives you the accessibility options. I encourage everybody to go to the website and try it out. It's a good addition to our website, and I want to encourage anybody listening who manages a website for Global Accessibility Awareness Day to look for ways that they can improve the accessibility of their websites. Is the innovation report for May.
Any questions for Debbie?
We have spent quite a bit of time over the last month. Debbie has been in meeting with department heads and trying to figure out, okay, we've got a lot of technology, we pay for a lot of technology. Are we using it to the fullest? Is there something else that we can add, expand to it, to improve our processes? But then also just discuss how do you improve your daily operations of your department? So the conversations are starting to get very interesting, so we hope it's going to be fruitful in the end. So Debbie's doing a great job reaching out to everybody, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we move now to 3.3, Unincorporated Residential Curbside Recycling Collection. We're happy to have Kevin Grant with us.
Good afternoon. Seems like for the past several years, every time we've come up here to discuss recycling, it's always talking about increasing fees and things like that. Unfortunately, this is another similar situation. The agreement that we currently have with Republic Services to take all the recyclable material from the county convenience centers, the schools, county buildings, and the unincorporated residents, it goes down to the material recycling facility in Charlotte, that agreement with Republic Services, as I presented last fall, was just a six-month temporary term. That ends the end of June. Going forward, we've been told from Mecklenburg County, who owns the facility, that any agreement's going to go through them right now, or going forward. The new terms are going to be, whatever we send down to them, is going to be $95 a ton. There's going to be no rebate based on market, so it's going to be straight processing cost. And just to let you all know, that is standard, and that's what you're starting to see throughout, not only the region, the state, but also the country. We're going through crossroads with recycling right now for a variety of reasons. One of the big things is China is rejecting a lot of our material, and a vast majority of the recyclable material that is created here in this country goes over there. With them kicking it back, it's creating a glut over here, market's depressed. The material that they are taking from us, they are being a lot more stringent in terms of contamination that's in there. For example, when we send them bales of plastic or paper, there's a lot of residual trash that might get mixed in there. A lot of it is when we offer citizens the ability to what we call single stream or putting everything into one cart. It is a very popular method, and it does create great participation with recycling, but also gives folks the ability to put items that aren't in there, that aren't supposed to be in there. Or you get a lot of folks who they call, or what we like to call, wishful recycling, put items in there hoping or thinking it should be recycled when it really isn't accepted from these facilities. And as I've mentioned before, a big portion of it is when we send this material in one big bunch down to this facility, it's manually and mechanically separated. So there's items that go in there, such as plastic bags, or say, a garden hose, or even a coat hanger, gets tangled up into the machinery, creates downtime, or prohibits the ability to properly sort out the material, so it's allowing more contamination. So slows the process down, they've got to shut the facility down, increase their processing costs, and then with the market being as depressed as it is right now, it's just very difficult circumstance right at this point. Still very important thing to do with recycling. I think the majority of folks in this country, in this region, want to recycle. We get positive comments. It's just, we've got to get to that reality that it costs money to recycle. And I think, once we get past that hurdle, I think we'll be back on a good course. But that's a big problem. I mean, folks, even when it comes to trash, it costs money. And we like to generate waste and trash and recyclables, but a lot of us don't like to pay the money that goes along with it. And unfortunately, that's going to have to start to change. As I said, it's going to be $95 a ton going forward. What we're focusing on right here is the unincorporated curbside recycling collection, and we've met with Republic, we've gone over this before, so there's a couple options that we've discussed with them that we could take. One item would be for Republic to pass on the total cost to each resident, which would roughly add about $3 a month to their bill. So instead of paying roughly $3.24 a month, that'd be $6.24 a month to recycle. Another item that we could look at is we could, Republic and the county both subsidize the program, maybe covering, if the county covers, for an example, say, half of that cost, and then we reduce what we have to charge the subscriber from Republic to do that. That's one option. The county could cover the whole amount, and at about 3,100 tons, at $95 a ton, that's roughly $295,000. The other option, which is an option I don't think nobody wants to do, would be to disband curbside recycling completely. If we did that, Republic would contribute some extra funds to us. We currently receive $30,000 as part of the franchise fee that we have with them. They could increase some of that in hopes of enhancing our two recycling convenience centers that we have, or maybe even creating some extra recycling convenience centers to make it more convenient for folks, and if we did disband the curbside recycling, at least folks would have a place to go to. So that's kind of what we're wrestling with now. Our cost has gone up greatly over the last couple of years, and like I said, we do have some money in the budget for recycling. As you can see right there on that one, that spreadsheet there, that's showing, the top one is fiscal 2018, and it's showing the county, we paid about $33,000, $34,000 for recycling. The one below is this current fiscal year, and you can see how the cost has gone up dramatically. We're already at $85,000, and we've, based on the current trend, we probably have to pay another $50,000. So, like I said, unfortunately, the cost continues to go up. As the recycling market hopefully kind of chills out a little bit, and then we, hopefully, the good thing that hopefully is going to happen with this whole issue with China is it's going to create a lot more domestic recycling opportunities, maybe some more businesses in this area. And as that starts to pop up, hopefully this cost starts to come down. So what I'm trying to say is hopefully this is the peak high cost at this point, although I keep saying that for the last couple of years, thinking that's going to happen, but I guess the reality is that, you know, recycling is, it does cost us money, it's here to stay. It's still a good thing. The other thing we have to be concerned about is the state of North Carolina does have landfill bans on certain items, and two of the items are aluminum cans and plastic bottles. So if they're going to continue to have a ban on putting stuff in a landfill, those items, I still think we need to provide a source for folks, an alternate source, so they're not putting in the trash and actually violating that landfill ban. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now. So I think what we came here today is to kind of get your opinion and thoughts on where we want to go going forward. Like I said, you know, the options are having Republic charge the customer completely for this increased cost, we somehow get together and share this cost going forward, or we look at discontinuing curbside collection completely in unincorporated areas.
That would mean the burden of any type of, that type of recycling would go on to our two convenience centers completely.
Or the additional of creating...
Or additional, but in terms of what we have now, I mean, we haven't discussed creating another convenience center. There is a cost associated with it.
And let me, one more point. You're starting to see communities in this area starting to increase fees for residents, so we would not be the only ones who are doing that. I know City of Charlotte, they're increasing their solid waste fees that they impose on their residents. I know it's going up about $6 a year for that, and in the surrounding area, you're starting to see more and more where they are passing that cost on, either through increased taxes or fees. So like I said, this is not a unique situation to us of this region, this is actually the whole country as well right now, so. And you're going to start to see this, you know, post-July 1, you're going to start to see stories where, you know, fees are going up. You're starting to see unfortunately some stories where recycling collection is being disbanded, which I think is a mistake, because I think once it also picks up, the market gets better, I think you'll see these folks trying to start it up again, and I don't think you want to stop this momentum, because, like I said, I think the majority of folks in this region, this country, we do want to recycle, we want to do, conserve resources. The other issue, too, is we've got a landfill over at the Speedway that has limited life, and one way to preserve the airspace in that landfill is to continue to recycle and divert, even if we've got to be careful in terms of items that we do recycle. But, you know, when that landfill closes up, and it's going to be sooner rather than later, you know, cost of trash is going to go up tremendously. So that's the other reason why I think we still need to continue recycling in every way possible. Any thoughts or comments on what we're discussing here?
Well, Kevin, I definitely agree with you. The problem that we have, it's not going to go away anytime soon, because at the rate that we're growing, not only locally, but regionally, and, I mean, we've got to have a place to dispose of our household waste, and as much of that stuff that can be recycled is going to be better, no doubt. But I think as time goes on, and county manager, you know, you and I have talked about this just a little bit, that with the potential of the closing of the Speedway landfill, and then even our own landfill on Irish Potato out there, even with that, you know, I think we're going to start looking mainly regionally for waste, you know, to get rid of the waste. I think it's something that, even with the Central Line of Council of Government, which I'm on that, appointed by this board, and one of the reasons that we joined back to CCOG is because things are becoming more regional now than they are local, and I can see that going with this just as well. And I can see that going with this just as well. But now the solution to the problem, that I don't have. But I know though, that it's an ongoing issue, and it's probably going to require a good head start to head it off because whatever we do will take years to see it come to fruition. When you think about all of the legalities, potential lawsuits, and all of those type things, you know, it could literally drag out for years. And I don't think we've got many, many years left with what we've got. So we, if we don't have some type of an advisory board, or some type of council that meets and discusses this regular, then I think that we're backing up instead of moving forward.
Also, just to let you know, we've been having constant dialogue and meetings with Mecklenburg County Solid Waste Director, as well as, you know, our solid waste folks here in Concord, Kannapolis, and the other towns, just to keep dialogue going, talking about what we're doing going forward. And that whole regional partnership, that keeps getting discussed because I think we all agree that we have to do this together. We've got to work at this. And it's the same thing even with recycling too, is we've got to all start as a region sending the same message and saying, this is what's acceptable, this is the way to do it, instead of everybody doing a little different and just creating a lot of confusion. So as you see a lot of commercials from, emulating from Mecklenburg County stating what to recycle, how to do it, and we might be off just a little bit. So we all agreed that we need to get together and create a common message too. So we are, and just, we are trying to create that regional partnership as well because we all agree, we're all in this together in terms of issues going forward.
I again, agree, you know, but the big problem for this is nobody wants a landfill next door, or in their neighborhood at all. Nobody that I know wants that. Be just like the airport over in Charlotte, you know, as they grow and as they grow and grow. But the bottom line is, it's just a fact of life of the society we live in today. And, but we really need to get started on working on that.
So as we are working through the budget, currently we are budgeting to absorb the additional cost. So, and that is the way we will be bringing it to you. So we will also be asking, do you want to pass, as Kevin said, pass on some of that cost to the customer? So right now, we're moving forward that the county will be paying the entire cost of the increase as well.
Yeah, it seems a little, I guess a little off to ask the taxpayer as a whole to subsidize the service that some few, I don't know how many, are getting. So, I mean, just on the surface, you know, I'm not sure how fair that is to, when you think about the county as a whole. I guess the question I've got is if the material has no value, which is what, I mean, if the market is that depressed, and China's been absorbing it and it's not, where is, if they're not taking it, where's it going?
China's still receiving some of the material. There's some other, it's, some of this material is being diverted to other Asian countries. Because what's going on is China's rejecting this, but the companies within China that use this product, they still want it. So you're starting to see some of these companies build facilities like in Vietnam and some other Asian countries, and it's being diverted that way as well. You're also starting to see some more domestic companies take it. So that's why I said, the market's depressed right now. I think when things kind of chill out a little bit, it will pick up. So it's going, it's going in a couple of different places. The one issue right now is, you know, we were having that steady stream of material going to China, and all of a sudden they put the stop sign up saying, we don't want anymore. So a lot of your ports on the West Coast that had all this material just stopped, had nowhere to go. So that's kind of what happened. It's slowly being bled out to these other places, or it's coming back this way and we're utilizing it. So, but it's going really slow, and that's kind of what's hurting the market prices right now. So, I mean, there's need for it. You're getting some big corporations such as the Walmarts and Targets of the world that are mandating that their suppliers, when they, when they package stuff that they sell in their stores, is made out of recycled content. So you're going to start to see that demand pick back up again. Like I said, we're just at this point in time where it's just really, really costly. And what we also need to do is make sure these material recycling facilities that sort it have money to maintain these facilities and keep them running. If they shut down, then we've got nowhere to go with this stuff. Or you're going to start asking that everybody goes back to what we used to do and have four or five different buckets to put your paper, your cardboard, your plastic, your glass, and so on. So I don't think we want to get to that point because when we want single stream recycling, we did see the participation rate go up tremendously. So I think we still want to do it. And to get on your point about the residents that subscribe with Republic, it's roughly around 11,000 households. So yeah, it's not every household in the unincorporated area. But just to give you an idea on what that number is.
That's not an insignificant number, 11,000. Okay. Well, I mean, that's just a general comment. One last question. So the negotiation with Mecklenburg County, how long typically would that time period be? So it looks like it's expiring in June of 19.
Well, the one, the existing agreement that we have with Republic, who manages the facility down there, and I believe is going to manage it, at least in the short term, excuse me, going forward. But Mecklenburg County owns the facility. And they got together with us and said, if you want to, we want your material, we're going to accept your material. But, I mean, they were frank about it, saying, you know, it's costing us quite a bit of money to run this facility, and we all know that, we see it. And with the market prices depressed, I mean, they're hurting. They want to be able to have cash on hand to improve the facility, to maintain it. Hopefully to get more modern sorting equipment that will hopefully improve the quality of this material that we send out to folks. But right now, we're in the process of working with Mecklenburg. Like you said, the number that they've given us, I don't have anything yet in paper. The verbal agreement that we have is $95 a ton, and we're welcome to send stuff down to there. And to be honest, we don't have a whole lot of different options right now. Because it's the other, the next closest material recycling facility is probably in Conover. And now you're talking about extra transportation costs, and that could change the cost dramatically there.
But do you have a sense on how long the $94 a ton will?
We do not know what that's, we do not know.
Mecklenburg is in the process of taking it back over from Republic for the facility. So a lot of the details, Kevin, has to go to about five meetings to put together a one-page word document.
Got you. Okay.
And just so you know, we are not alone. This is how every municipality and county that's sending to them is. So we wanted to get in front of you, and that's why we put what we felt was the worst-case scenario in the budget in terms of subsidizing the entire thing.
And yeah, the other municipalities within Cabarrus as well are, they're working with Mecklenburg under these same terms right now. Because when we all, when we meet with Mecklenburg, we all sit down together. So this is, what we're presenting to you right now is the same thing that Concord, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, everybody else is going through right now. And like I said, unfortunately, we're kind of stuck in this situation because there really is nowhere to go. But I will tell you that that price is fairly consistent, or if not, a little lower than what other folks in this region and the state are having to pay for recycling.
Seems that, it sounds reasonable to me that we budget for that this current year and continue to evaluate the situation. I think that our citizens are supportive of recycling. I think they would be very upset if we eliminated that. And then I think if you look at the long-term cost, and of course, you could speak to this better than me, but if we eliminate recycling, even though it's gotten more expensive, and start to fill up landfills with that material, and then try to replace those landfills, the cost is going to be far greater, long-term, not to mention all the environmental concerns and things that we have an entire generation that we have taught that that's the smart thing to do, you know, to try to eliminate some of that waste and some of what's going into landfills. We had an interesting conversation recently with someone that came to one of our strategic planning sessions that was amazed to learn that garbage from Mecklenburg County is being hauled into Cabarrus County at the Speedway landfill. And they seemed quite aghast to know that. But that's been happening for a very long time, and we would be faced with a situation of hauling it somewhere else, which is going to be more expensive, et cetera. I mean, there are a lot of costs involved.
Yeah, you look at the different philosophies, but you've got to realize the Speedway landfill is a private landfill. They're in its own, yeah, the majority, I don't know if the majority, but a big percentage of the material that goes in that landfill does come from Charlotte and Mecklenburg County. And that's where you get discussions where, back in the day, where counties did own and operated their own landfill because they controlled just your county and you took care of your folks. That philosophy kind of drifted away 20, 30 years ago, and now you're starting to see people even look back at it. But then, excuse me, you get the issue of, like you said, I don't want it in my backyard, and do you have space to do this? So that's, you know, like I said, we all like to generate waste, we all do it, but we don't, we don't want it in your backyard, and we don't want to pay for it. So it's that really difficult situation.
Yeah. Well, I think to informing the public, the conversations that we have had previously here have made an impact on me. Now I can visualize those plastic bags flying around. I found some strings in my recycling container that came off of bales of pine needles the other day, and I got in and fished them out. I could see them tangling up the works and, you know. So the more we know about it, and the more we talk about it, I think the, and I've also thought about those, the greasy pizza boxes too.
If, it just takes a little bit. If everybody does a little thing, it's going to add up to a lot. The example that I've been giving, when I've been giving a lot of presentations concerning this is, if you're operating a vacuum cleaner and you run over, like you said, a string or a plastic bag, what happens to your vacuum cleaner? It seizes up. And that's part of the problem that they're experiencing these material recycling facilities. So when you start to visualize that, you do start to think. And like I said, it just takes a little bit, and we keep out, you know, pounding the pavement and trying to tell people and educate people. And, you know, we're going to get better, but we do got to change that culture. Because like I said, we created, when we went to the single stream, you know, we kind of made a mistake too by, I'm exaggerating a little bit by saying you can put everything in there. But people do. When you've got that 95-gallon container, and you've got a lid, you do put a lot of stuff that probably shouldn't go in there, and you cover the lid, and you're like, okay, it's not my problem. So, so we kind of created that. You've got the convenience that did drive the cost down in terms of collecting recyclables versus having it in the bin, and having a truck driver get out of the truck and put, you know, paper in the back end and bottles in the front end, and so on. So, but this is the next step we're at right now, so.
Yeah. So again, through the budget process, currently we have, we have the entire amount in there. But some options that you do have to zero out that increase is to pass on the entire fee to the customer, or you could phase it in. If it's a $3 increase, you can phase it in over three years with an increase to the customer as well. So we'll be having some more conversations with you about that.
And you said $3 more a month?
Correct. Yes. That would be the full, based on what they're charging us, that would be the full cost additional increase. And obviously, like you said, if the prices and the market condition change, we will make sure that there's provisions to adjust the price accordingly based on that. But that's what it's roughly, when you break it down versus the number of households, what it's going to be right now.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. We will be talking trash more. We move now to discussion items for action. First up is 4.1 from Finance, Approval of Maintenance and Repair Agreement between Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools. And we're happy to have Susan Fearington with us.
Like you said, this evening, I'm here to present the Maintenance and Repair Agreement between Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools. This new agreement will be for the next five years, so we'll cover FY '20 through FY '24 with our current contract expiring June 30th of this year. For history, the first contract of this type was entered into in 1999, and the county is responsible for school facilities, as we know. And we're fortunate that Cabarrus County Schools has taken the lead and provides this building and ground maintenance for both school systems on behalf of the county. The proposed contract as presented spells out responsibilities and expectations for the upkeep of the properties. The budget for the building and maintenance and the grounds maintenance is presented as part of our county's annual budget that you'll be seeing. And then the funding is allocated to projects based on the ADM count. Normal increases each year will be added to the first-year request for the next five years for as new facilities are added. For FY '20, just to give you an idea of what's going to be coming up in our budget, we have for Cabarrus County School Buildings, $8.4 million. For Cabarrus County Schools Grounds, we have $1.5 million, approximately 1.5, 1.6. For Kannapolis City, we have buildings of $1 million. And Kannapolis City Schools Grounds, $270,000. So this funding will cover 42 Cabarrus County School Buildings and their property around the buildings, and 11 Kannapolis City School Buildings and surrounding grounds, and 12 school parks. So the Director of Facility Management, Maintenance Department for the schools conducts an annual survey of the properties each year to create a maintenance plan for the upcoming year. So let's just give you a little bit of history behind the contract and why we do what we do. Questions?
Any questions for Susan? Well, it seems to have been working well.
Yes.
And so it's good that we have that collaboration going on between the two systems.
Great.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to item 4.2, Human Resources. Presentation of Salary Study Results and Recommendation. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Becky Dros. I am the HR Advisor in the Area of Compensation for the Employers Association. The Employers Association is a business association that was established in 1958. We provide HR services, HR training, and HR tools to more than 930 member organizations. The members that we work with represent a wide range of industries and organizations. We work with a variety of other municipalities and counties and not-for-profits as well. We are part of one of 40 sister associations that makes up the Greater Employers Associations of America. As I mentioned, I'm Becky Dros. I am fairly new to the Employers Association, but I bring 15 years of experience in human resources, compensation, and employee relations. I'm also a Senior Certified Professional, professional, and a Certified Senior Professional, two different certifications. And for this project, we also worked with Jean Gilreath. Jean has been a partner to the Employers Association for more than 13 years. And Jean brings more than 35 years of experience and the same certifications and more. So you've got a wealth of experience. For this project, what we did is a variety of different things. I'm going to take you through the methodology for the compensation study that we did this year, and talk about a couple of different recommendations, some to be implemented with your coming-up year, and some things to look at next year and as you continue to move The positions that we looked at this year represented 15 different departments in the county, and 90 different job titles were selected. Those job titles were selected by your leadership and sent to us for the analysis. And these positions represent more than 325 incumbent employees. This year, we used five different surveys. The best practice is to have at least three survey sources. However, we expanded and we added some additional. Based on some of the feedback from the leadership and from the HR team, we wanted to make sure that we were getting accurate market data, so we expanded and included five surveys Of the surveys and the positions that we went through, we were able to successfully match all 90 positions to at least one survey, but we actually did fairly well. We were able to match 94.4% of those 90 jobs to three or more survey sources. So we got some really solid market data for the positions that we studied this year. When we look at the surveys and we're pulling the data, there are a couple of different things that we look at. We were looking generally for positions and look at. We were looking generally for positions and organizations located in the Charlotte metro area. So we're looking in the surrounding area. We looked at government organizations, not-for-profit organizations, and for some, we actually looked at all industries. And the reason that we do that is you have a lot of positions and especially some that we studied this year that really cross beyond counties. Any private organization has an IT person, you know, so those are some jobs that we were hearing that there were, were some issues and some of those were some hot jobs. So for some of those roles that you're going to see across organizations and outside of government, we explored the market data for all industries. The positions that we looked at, we're looking at transferable skills. So we're looking at job descriptions. We're not looking just at job titles, but we're looking at those skills that are spelled out in the job description so that when we're matching to those survey sources, we're not just matching on a title. We are matching on the, the responsibilities and the authority that those incumbents have. The data points that we use are based on the 50th percentile or the median data point. So anywhere in our survey where we pulled market data, that's the, the figure that we're looking at. And then what we did is we took those five survey sources and we created one single market data point, giving equal weight to all of the surveys that we used. This year, we did do a Cabarrus County sponsored survey. So we reached out to more than 30 surrounding municipalities and counties and we had 23 survey participants that provided information based off of the job descriptions that we were studying this year. So we had 23 different organizations that participated in that sponsored survey. So that gave us a really solid understanding of what is happening in other, other counties around you. I know that Cabarrus is ranked number 11 in size and I think we've got the top 10 included in the study this year. So we can really see what's happening. So the recommendations that we have to implement effective July 1 of 2019, the first is to adjust your salary structure by 1.5%. We understand that your past practice for the county has been to move your structure based on the cost of living allowance. And that's where that, that number has come from and that's something that's been traditionally done. I will tell you that initially we recommended that you don't do that and I'll talk more about that. But I will say that for this year, um, after talking to the leadership and, you know, getting some understanding on the employee relations side of it from your, your HR team, we do believe that you should adjust your structure for 2019. Our understanding is also there's no additional cost to that. Is that COLA is something that has already been built in to your budget. On the positions that we look at, we did have a couple of recommendations to make some grade changes based on the market data. So again, when we look at the cost of labor and what it costs to hire for those positions and what other areas, what other companies are paying, that's where we had some, some recommendations as far as grade changes. So you have 12 incumbent employees who are in a position that we suggested should be moved to a different grade. And we would recommend giving those employees a one-time market adjustment to bring them up to the minimum of the salary grade. For those employees, it's a cost of $85,358.62. You also have 22 incumbent employees who we recommend that their, their position has a grade change, but because they are already above the minimum of that grade, we recommend making a one-time 3% market adjustment so that they can be in their new range. The cost for that is $53,526.72 for a total cost of $138,885.34. For all of your employees, after those who need a market adjustment, be it to get to the minimum or that 3%, then we would recommend that you follow your 2.5% merit increase allowance and the COLA as you have previously budgeted. So again, for 2019, we recommend you follow those, those same practices. It's a, a good practice to continue the study of benchmarking your jobs and studying your positions. I know that basically with your previous study and the study that was done this year, you have one group that has not yet been studied. So our recommendation would definitely be to look at those last departments. Is it more than one?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I know human services, but I know you've got a couple. So I, I would say next year, look at those remaining departments that were not studied last year or this year. And then you'll have studied all of your departments and have market data that's current and relevant for all of your groups. And I would use the same methodology and go through the same steps. Outside of that, if there are hot jobs that come up, if you have departments that are having a hard time filling a position and you're, you're hearing from people that you want to hire that the salary is not high enough, or if you're experiencing a lot of turnover in a particular department or a particular role, then we would look at those off-cycle throughout the year just to conduct a, a market study for those. So future recommendations beyond 2019, one of the things that we would recommend is eliminating the COLA. COLA is, is an entitlement that everybody sees that set amount that they get. If you allocate those dollars into a merit increase, it allows you to create a culture that's more about pay for performance. You can work towards engaging your employees by setting goals and then rewarding based on, on their delivery of those expectations. We're starting to see this more and more in different organizations and municipalities and that, that seems to be where it's trending and I would recommend the same thing here. It also then allows you a little more flexibility with how you use your dollars and the ability to reward top performers. Um, it's certainly not something to be taken lightly and I, I wouldn't just say do away with it, but I would definitely recommend looking at the data and looking at some alternatives to just giving the COLA. One of the other things that we would recommend is to make some revisions to the actual salary structure itself. Your current salary structure has a lot of grades in it. And then the midpoint of your grades is very close from one level to the next. So you end up getting a lot of compression where you have people who are very close together, but you can't account for that different level of experience or that different level of performance. So by, by reducing the number of grades and increasing that midpoint to midpoint range, it gives you some additional flexibility as well. So we would just look at realigning the structure. The other part too, not just midpoint to midpoint, is just, you know, really cleaning up your, your minimum and your maximum and making sure it's consistent between each I understand this practice was previously recommended and you have implemented it, but we would definitely recommend that you continue giving employees who have reached the top of their maximum, so they're at the top of their salary range, continue to give them just a one-time lump sum sustained performance award to recognize their performance. Okay. Questions?
The, the last slide that you just showed, it is under recommendation. So how do we handle that now when somebody's at the, at the high, at the, the max?
We adopted that last, we adopted that last year and that is the, um, again, recommendation going forward.
Okay.
But we, in the past, we have not been able to do that and there definitely was some concern for employees who are at that point.
Right.
So that seems to be working well for us. And again, it's just good to have that validated. That is a best practice.
Yeah. Well, that makes sense because theoretically, the people that are, are there would be a lot of experience, a lot of know-how, good employees that you want to keep, but would also be creating demand from somewhere else. And so if you're not doing anything to try to keep them, you're, you're, you're losing ground. So, okay, good.
Just one question. Becky, you say you do have some data about the COLA versus the not COLA?
Uh, you know, I was actually thinking about, yes, we do and we can certainly look and see who is offering that. But if Cabarrus County were to continue doing a custom survey, I was kind of brainstorming on that and that might even be something that you could include as a question to get some, you know, true market data for this area. But yes, there is data out there as well.
Yeah. I would be interested in seeing some data between now and the time we vote on this.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
If I could briefly explain the other document we gave you. Traditionally, in the years past, we've given you a list of departments that do have the moves. So that is what has been taken out of this recommendation. Um, what our plan is from here is, again, presenting it to you today, but we'll be following up with our departments, um, department heads of those impacted areas. And of course, it requires multiple levels of approval for this to come into play. Approving the salary study is the first step. And then in addition to that, if it's approved, the items that are recommended are in the budget. So that would not be before you until June. So we try to roll this out in a deliberate manner. Our department heads and the supervisors first, and then the impacted employees would get that information as the approvals are forthcoming. So if there are any questions about the positions, but that'll give you a feel for what actually has been slated to move. And, you know, it is fair to note, some of these positions have been recommended to move multiple grades. And that's why you're seeing that fair number of employees that are recommended to move up to the minimum. With that big a jump, um, just the 3% wasn't enough to really address it. So if there are any questions on that spreadsheet as well, we just want to make sure you have an opportunity while we're here.
Does this address the, reducing the number of grades that she, it does not?
It does not. And in fairness, we wanted to get through the last third.
Right.
We're doing that third, third, third. So next year, when we do human services and infrastructure and asset management and our admin positions, that'll give us a chance to get all three through the process.
Right.
And we would recommend looking at that change at that point instead of doing it mid, mid-cycle. So again, some of this is just to put it out before you and let you know what we'd like to consider in the future. Um, so whether you need the information now or for next year, we can kind of time that out. We definitely want to make sure you're getting answers to your questions. It is a lengthy process. It can be a confusing process. So again, hopefully this has given you enough of an opportunity to explore topics that you're interested in.
So what number of, and you may not know this, but what number of employees are left to be looked at in the group that hasn't been?
It's next year, we have human services, we have infrastructure and asset management and our administrative positions.
Do you know ballpark, how many total employees that is?
So there's 300 and something in.
It's between, probably around 450.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a pretty big group next year.
And so would they be the third that has not been done yet? That'll complete the cycle?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions or comments? I'm sure we'll be talking about this a lot more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is item 4.3, which is appointments to boards and committees. And you all have that, um, information, uh, in front of you in the agenda, uh, which will go on our consent agenda unless anybody has any additions or questions or concerns. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to item 4.4. Um, that is a resolution amending the Board of Commissioners 2019 meeting schedule. Lauren Woodall is included in that.
Um, it is just adjusting the July date for the.
Right. Okay. We're moving a meeting from
15th to the 22nd.
I will be unavailable on July 22nd. So will be out of the country.
Okay.
And I am supposed to be unavailable, but I think I can either change my plans or call in because I think the new procedures say that, but I'm not sure if it does for a regular meeting or if it's just the work meeting. But I think I can make mine work if we change that.
Okay. Well, we can discuss this going forward if we have to change it again.
The 29th?
We can do that as well. Would the 29th work better?
I will be back by the 29th.
Let's see. We are, normally in Ju, we would do July 1st and 15th. So we're moving to the 22nd. We could move to the 29th. That would just give us, that means we'd just meet two weeks in a row. Would that work better, would work better for you, Commissioner Cogar? How about you, Commissioner Honeycutt?
I'm not 29th.
Uh-huh. Is that agreeable, agreeable with everyone?
I can promise I won't be yet. But I, but I can be.
Okay.
You know, it works.
Okay. Well, we will go ahead and make that change. And that will be included in our consent agenda as well, I think. Well, as, we can include that as amended. Okay. Then we move to item 4.5, Literacy Coordinator Room Office Renovation. And it looks like that is Kyle and Kristen. And Emery. Or, or Emery.
Yes, or Emery.
We're interchangeable.
Thought I'd bring up Emery for some, I guess, content in terms of if anyone had questions about that, what the space was going to be used for. Um, several years ago, Emery came to IM and asked us to investigate, um, doing some modifications to a, a workspace that they have on the second floor of the library. And to give you some context, this was never one of the spaces that we touched during their last renovations. Um, in fact, the only thing we did was relamp it. It is so old. It is one of those workrooms that has the old wooden cabinets in the sinks in them, even though nobody needs sinks in their offices. Um, and we just, we never touched it. Right next to that room is an old storage room that it'll, goes to show you what fire code and probably ADA code was so long ago. You can't, you can walk in it. It literally fits me and probably another, a foot, you can't put a shelf in it. You can't, you wouldn't even be able to move around. It, it's completely unusable. And we were approached to say, could we make this space more usable? And one of the thought processes was to, to basically break up that, that room into two separate rooms since it was, this storage closet and this workstation were so underutilized, we could combine them and kind of create an actual place where tutoring could be taking place and also where there was a large window so that a literacy coordinator could be sitting in there watching the room where the tutoring was going on versus it taking place in the, the floor of the library. We had identified this project. We've actually already done the design, meaning it is a shovel-ready, permissible project. We had it in our Level 2 9501 projects for next year, which is our, kind of our, our customer requested projects. And, um, when we met with Kristen, uh, she was able to find some funding that was going to be used for the Midland Library, the equipment that could be shifted over and used for this project. So that, that is what the gist of this is, is using remaining funds from the Midland Library Equipment and Furniture to put towards the literacy coordinator office now so that we can go ahead and basically get done with our final permitting and go ahead and try to bid it out and do the work.
Okay. Questions? For the benefit of the public, the, the funds that were previously budgeted for Midland were in excess of what was actually needed. And I think maybe that may have been what was budgeted a number of years ago when we were thinking they were building a much larger facility. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did that budget based on when they had their new town hall.
Right, right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? And I think that you are requesting action on this tonight.
Yes.
So that you can proceed ahead.
Yes. We'd like motion to suspend the rules and approve the attached budget amendment tonight and the project ordinance.
Okay. Commissioners, you hear the request. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And I would now entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment and project ordinance to proceed with this project.
[laughing]
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move now to item 4.6, Purchase of Right-of-Way and Easements for Hickory Ridge Elementary School. And Jonathan will talk with us about that.
I don't know if, um, Tim or Brian is joining me or both of them, but if you should have questions about the project itself, Tim Louder and Brian Coner here. As, as you're aware, we've been negotiating for easements or right-of-way. We had preferred right-of-way. Hickory Ridge is one of those roads where there is in fact, no right-of-way. People own to, the property owners own to the center line. There's just an assumed right-of-way for maintenance purposes. So for the purpose of constructing or putting in a water line to serve the new elementary school on Hickory Ridge, as well as some road improvements, we need to purchase all the way to the center line. Um, often in some cases from both sides. Um, so we've cases from both sides. So we have a number of property owners we've been working with, and we have reached a verbal agreement with all of them. This is actually presenting the majority of those to you for approval, including a budget, a small budget amendment at this point. Those are listed in a memorandum. I've supplied to you, won't go through all of them unless you have questions. There are two of these that are owned by one property owner. Those are listed as Exhibit B and D. Mr. Cook may want to address the, the title work in general, but that's one that we are not confident on, on who we would be paying for that. We reached agreement on price, but we're not confident because there are so many complications to the title of that, that we don't know who to, to give that money to. So I've actually, I've challenged Mr. Cook to find some way that perhaps, since we've reached agreement on the price, that we could escrow those, or some way perhaps we can deposit those, so we can move forward with the full project, while we work out who that payment would go to. So I've not included that one. Should we find that method, I'll bring that back to you with a budget amendment for that purpose. Again, we have $50,000 we budgeted for this. The total of the ones we're presenting to you tonight are $53,500, basically. And Susan Farrington has proposed that we make that budget amendment from the contractor's sales tax refunds.
Okay, any questions for Jonathan? I think this is one we've talked about a couple times before. Happy to hear that you've reached final solutions.
There are some conditions on some of these. I've noted, I don't think any of those were a problem. I'll let Tim, I think you can meet all those conditions.
Right. We've had one property owner request that we moved some mailbox posts and some columns, that sort of thing, at the end of the road that her son built for her back when he was in high school and had made some of that sort of thing.
I, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, we've had one, one property owner ask us to move a couple, well, brick column type mailbox post things that her son built for her back when he was in high school, has some sentimental value. Our contractors looked at them and said he can do that, so we were able to accommodate that sort of thing, so.
Right. Okay, any questions? Alrighty, thank you. And we move now to item 4.7, support letter for multi-use paths with NC 73 widening. Jonathan?
I've included in your agenda packet minutes from the city of Concord that show they have, have, have passed along their support for this item, as well as a letter from the city of Kannapolis. Now this deals with the 73 widening project in particular from the county line to I-85. That section is, in some places was showing, where the cross-section from what would be the new road, was showing a four-lane divided highway, but on each side there would be bike lanes included with the vehicle travel lanes, and then a sidewalk outside of that. Because of the high-speed design of those sections, Concord, Kannapolis, and the county have indicated to DOT that we would rather have a multi-use path. So you'd have a wider path that was constructed away from the travel lane. So bikes, as well as pedestrians, would be away from the travel lane. So you'll have, of course, the, the travel lanes for trucks and cars, then you would have a planting strip, and then you would have these multi-use paths. With any of these things, there is a cost to the municipalities, not to the county, for, for helping to pay for those. But what DOT is looking at now is taking what they would spend both on the sidewalks, as well as the widened travelways, and taking the majority of that cost to help offset these multi-use paths, and thus reducing what Concord and Kannapolis would have to pay. They have asked for a letter of support from us indicating we would like to see these. And I included Commissioner Poole on this agenda item, because I know this has also been an item that the MPO, which he chairs, has been discussing. But we would ask for, for the letter from the chairman to help support that, because we believe this is a much better solution. In lieu of that, you have, would have, as you know, 55 mile an hour traffic and bicycles on the same travelway, and, and we just don't think that's a good combination.
Makes, makes a lot of sense to me that we would support the efforts of the other municipalities in this regard. Any questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move to item 4.8, review of via bids to provide bulk catering services to the Lunch Plus program. And we're happy to have Susan Doman here to talk about that.
Hello. Our bulk catering services for the Lunch Plus program had new news this year. In early April, we were notified by our current caterer that they were no longer in the hot meal business as of July 1, and that was Canteen through Compass Groups. So at that time, we contacted Tom, Thomas Nunn, let him know that we needed to go out for bid and quickly. Being federally funded in part, we had to do a two-week bid process, so that went out on April the 8th through the 22nd. And unfortunately, no one bid. We had no one come forward. At that time, we were searching for another service, of course, with no success. No one seemed interested. And then suddenly, we had a company approach us that was interested in providing this service for us. This was the Bateman Community Living, and they are a subsidiary of Elior North America. They had currently been familiar with Canteen, had worked closely with them for many years. In fact, had been in the business over 50 years in the senior meal programs. So we felt comfortable with them from the beginning, just because of their knowledge. They met with us on April the 25th, that was within three days of that, and we received a proposal for them. And each of you have a copy of that, I believe, already, that you, that you've looked at. They are providing a rate sliding scale for us, that's on page 10 of the proposal. And, and that is, that is different than we've seen before. But it's really, it's really great for us, because it gives us an incentive to grow our numbers. As we get more numbers and more participants, the rate will go down. Currently, we are within the 135 to 155 meals per day, so that brings it to the 520. Currently, we were paying Canteen $4.95 a month, so that's a $25 per cent meal cost. But it's not going to be difficult to add 10 to 20 meals to get, to bring that down. They are also including in there a registered dietitian, which we haven't had before. So for meal substitutions, they'll give us that RDA equivalent. Anytime we have food that has to be substituted, the same thing will occur. The registered dietitian is a North Carolina licensed registered dietitian. Their corporate office for Elior is currently in Charlotte, so they're local. So we do like that. They have a longstanding relationship, as I said, with Compass and Canteen, so there will be a very efficient and easy transition. They are also going to provide electronic health information to us, which meets one of our requirements in the program. So the participants will receive something to put on the refrigerator, for instance, about some exercise they could do, or eating healthier, those kinds of tips. And that's something that, that we, we enjoyed hearing about. They also are going to do quarterly menu reviews, which is something we currently haven't had. And that is, every three months, you're looking at what the seniors like and what they don't like. If they don't like the food, they're not going to come. So this is a way for us to review that and see how we're doing. And again, they're longstanding relationship, over 50 years working with Title III agencies under the older Americans Act. And, and in the contract, it is a five-year term with a 30-day termination, mutual no-calls. So any questions on that? We are recommending this company for our bulk catering service.
What's your average attendance per site, and which ones do you see that'll probably have the most growth?
The sites that we see having the most growth are our new site, the Northwest Cabarrus site. We are very excited about that. That's bringing service to a much-needed area, as well as Harrisburg. I think that's a growing city, and we should see, see more there. We've recently added to our staff, it's, she's actually a Lunch Plus Club supervisor, assistant. So she subs when someone else is out. But she came to us with a plethora of, of experience in marketing, and she has contacts, just many contacts. And she's already increased our outreach between eight a month to 30-some a month, to large groups. And we have more classes than we've ever had before, educational presentations, those kinds of things. And, and we had 43 new participants just in April. So that's the difference she's making. So I can see that we can do this, and we can bring the rate down. Just 20 more participants will bring us five cents less than we're paying the current caterer. So I think that says a lot.
And so how many sites do we currently have?
We have six now.
Six, and what's the average daily total?
And the average, which, sorry, you asked that as well. Yeah, average daily would be around, at each site, they're very varied. So we have a lot at one site, not so much. So I would say around 30 to 35.
Per site?
Per site. But, but you, but you have certain days. It's hard to kind of peg that, because it's up and down, depending on weather, also the meal that day, whether they like the meal or not, and if they, we, they like bingo, so we do try to have bingo more often. So, but, but we are looking to grow those.
So between 175 and 200 per day, average?
We, we have some days the other around 155, and then, uh, mm-hmm. Yeah, we looked at that.
And their, and their number is based on the total number, not per site?
Yes, just the total number.
Yeah, and they prepare that off-site?
They prepare that in a, in a kitchen in Charlotte. In fact, the Bateman purchased the kitchen from Canteen already. So it's the same kitchen, it may be the same workers, it may be the same driver. The participants will see no gap in services. They'll see no difference. And their menu was attached to the proposal, and it looked very good to me. They do a six-months repeat on that menu, so looking, you know, for good food. We're going to do possibly a big splash about them coming onboard, you know, out in the community. So, so hopefully, anyone that hasn't come can come and check out the new caterer, so. And we're also having a grand opening at our new site coming up this month, on May 23rd, so I hope you all are able to attend.
So what do you, how, what do you have to do to qual, what do you, who qualifies for these sites?
You just have to be 60 and older, and it's.
Anybody that's 60 and older, you don't have to make a reservation?
We do take meal reservations. If you're brand-new and you, and you, and you, you know, you still need to call before noon, and let us know that you're planning to attend. We have a meal reservation system to basically keep our waste and throwaway under control. So they do have to reserve a meal the day before. They can call and let us know, or they can be there and sign up for the whole week ahead, whichever. But we do try to keep that to, you know, the closest numbers we can, because we don't want the waste.
Right.
So we, we work very hard on that. And that's something that Central Line of Government's kind of worked with all the, the different sites in all the different counties about, is really working with that meal reservation system, so you don't have that.
Right. And can, can you tell us the names and locations of the sites?
I can. We have a site at Midland, it's United Baptist Church, and that's off of Flowstore Road. We have Mount Pleasant Senior Center, which is, you know, at the senior center in Mount Pleasant. And we have the Concord Senior Center, which is at the Logan Multipurpose Center. We have a Harrisburg site, which is Harrisburg United Methodist Church. And we have the Kannapolis site, which is on Little Texas Road in, in Kannapolis. That's at the Living Water Church, is the multipurpose building. And our new site, Northwest Cabarrus, is at 6020 Mooresville Road, on, out on Highway 3, just right, almost at the junction of Kannapolis Highway and 3, right there.
Kannapolis Parkway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think there are probably a lot of people out there that don't, don't really realize that this service is available. And it's a wonderful op, option for nutrition, as well as socialization, and the other activities that you offer. You, you folks do a great job.
Thank you. Cindy, our nutrition coordinator is right behind you, and she does a fantastic job. Yeah, we like, our county goes over and above and beyond, I think. And, you know, we are working hard to make these, a little bit like many senior centers, I guess, that would, you know, have the full array of the wellness program. But the socialization and preventing isolation is what our main goal is. We need to get them there, and we need to, the people need to notice if they don't show up, those kinds of things. I can tell you stories of when we've noticed that someone didn't show, or a van, you know, the van went to pick them up and they weren't there, and, and we actually saved someone's life, because they had fallen and no one knew. So that's important as well.
Okay, questions for Susan?
Just one quick question, and I probably just overlooked it, because it was a lot of reading in the.
It was.
But is it operated Monday through Friday? Or is, what I've seen here, 250 operating days per year, is that right?
Mm-hmm. Average month is 21 to 22 service days, as a rule. And, and our only site that's not operating five days a week is our new site, just because they have a class that's interfering. So we are negotiating that and looking at that. We did have to get a waiver from the state of North Carolina for that four-day. So that, you know, naturally, we would prefer the five days a week, but all other sites are five days.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we move now to 4.9, from emergency management, adoption of the 2019 emergency operation plans. Happy to have Bobby Smith with us.
Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight. Every five years, we have to re-adopt our county emergency operations plan. This is the overarching plan that guides our direction and control on, on what we call on all hazards. So it doesn't matter what the emergency is, if it's inland hurricane, a chemical incident, flooding. These are the guidelines and principles we follow to guide our, excuse me, response and resources to any of those emergencies. In 2014, we did a very intensive study and working with a contractor and all of our department heads and outside partners, and reformatted and rewrote the entire plan, which was, again, very labor-intensive, but it gave us a good document back in 2014. So the update for this cycle was a little simpler. We were able to handle everything by emails and phone calls, and there are actually no substantial changes because of the work done five years ago. Basically, we had a few name changes in some places. Again, we involve all our departments that are part of our emergency operations plan, all the outside agencies in this review. This plan is also reviewed annually by the state. We have to meet state requirements. We have passed those requirements with this plan. And we take it a step further. We're not required to, but we also have a federal crosswalk that we make sure our plan is in compliance with, so that we meet federal standards. So what we're asking from you is for review and adoption of the plan for 2019, for this five-year cycle. And I would address any questions you may have.
Okay, questions for Bobby?
It seems interesting that it does not require a public hearing.
Yeah, this plan does not require a public hearing. We'll be coming to you in the fall with our mitigation plan, which does require a public hearing. Different federal and state standards for the different plans.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to 4.10, resolution relating to the installment financing contract for school and public-purpose land.
On your May 20th board meeting, we'll have a public hearing for the financing of the school and public-purpose land. This is the first step for the financing. Three requests will be included in this financing. The county, county is currently evaluating properties for a future Cabarrus County School, Middle School, High School, and possibly a senior center and library. So we want to get that, those procedures in place and ready to go. The amount for the financing will be not to exceed $11 million, but as in the past, we will only borrow the amount of money that's actually needed. So it's just the first step.
I'm assuming that when it comes to these projects, we'll be paying the soft cost and all that stuff, like we normally do upfront?
We, we will try to do that, yes.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 4.11, policy updates from the library. And we welcome Emery Ortiz back to the table.
Good evening. Okay, so we have been in the process of reviewing our policies, and the two that were probably in need of the biggest updates were the two that I've included for you, and that is our meeting room policy, and our rules and regulations for conduct in the library policy. So the meeting room policy is fairly simple in terms of the changes. We're basically removing all of the meeting rooms in the public libraries away from being reservable facilities, except for the auditorium in the Concord Library. And the reason for that, you've heard me speak many times about the overcrowding of the libraries, how we have to keep turning people away, because we can't put as many people in the rooms as we need to, or that arrive for the programs. So this is going to allow us a little bit more flexible space to have library-led programs, to have more educational focus when groups come to us and need space to tutor, you know, to have those conversations in the community. We were finding that the meeting rooms are being kind of monopolized by organizations or groups that. or groups that don't necessarily serve strictly Cabarrus County residents. So it was just causing a lot of conflict. So this is our solution to that. So now, the Concord auditorium would be reservable to any agency that is in or serves Cabarrus County citizens, and it would now be a paid reservation, just as our other facilities in Active Living and Parks and Board of Elections are. And that would be $100 per two-hour block. And that room holds up to, I think, 300 people, depending on the configuration of the room. So it's still available. There is a slight charge now. It is still cheaper than the Charlotte Mecklenburg Library reservation fees, trying to keep it equitable. Any questions on that?
My question was what the fee was based on, and it, whether it was sort of market-based or any, so, yep, I think that's exactly right. Things cost, but you got to make sure you're fair.
Exactly. And we were, you know, we have the custodial staff and the library staff working extra hours to set up the rooms and clean up and all of that. So it did seem like a, a fair trade-off. And the second policy is the rules and regulations for conduct in the library. Again, owing to the increase in traffic than we, we've seen over the past couple of years, different people moving into the area, just kind of different, changing scenes in downtown Concord, we're seeing a lot of new things that were not necessarily addressed in our behavioral policy, that we tried to kind of update and express more clearly. Probably one of the biggest ones that we added in was just interpersonal conduct amongst patrons, what is considered appropriate and what is considered things that people will be asked to leave for. So that is spelled out in that policy. Everything else was fairly straightforward. Slight wordings were changed. We had a lot of people bringing luggage into the library and taking up a lot of floor space and, and walkway space, so we've changed some wording in there. And then the biggest significant change, I think, in this is the part at the end where we address banning and consequences of not complying with the rules and regulations. So there's a little bit more of a straightforward process now to being warned, to being temporarily banned, to being permanently banned. And that is what those updates do. Any questions there?
Any questions for Emery? Serving on the Library Board of Trustees as well, we have had extensive discussion about all these items over the past number of months.
Six months, yes.
So it's, it's not coming without a lot of, a lot of thought and discussion on, by volunteers, as well as library staff.
Yes. Yes, this was, they were both approved by the Library Board of Trustees at their March meeting as well.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, 4.12, from the Register of Deeds Office, partial refund of excise tax. And I do not see the register of deeds here. As I understand it, that was, that figure is set by the closing attorney on transactions, and they've come back and requested an adjustment. Does that sound accurate? Does anybody have questions on that one? That's a pretty standard item. Okay, then we move to item 4.13, from the Sheriff's Office, approved bid award, and we're happy to have Chief Deputy Bailey with us.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak tonight. I come before you, we were allocated $420,000 through some Medicaid No Harmless Funds for the purchase of some more police vehicles. It's to help to mitigate some of the demand that we would have on next year's budget, so that money was available and was allocated to us for that purchase. Bids were sent out, and we received four bids, the lowest being from Hillbush Ford in Kannapolis, North Carolina. And the, the cost per vehicle is in front of you, I think, in your packet. And I'm here tonight to ask for a motion to suspend the rules and go ahead and, and get those purchase orders issued, so that we can meet the deadline for purchase orders in this, in this current budget year.
Okay, any questions? Do I hear a motion that we suspend the rules?
Make a motion, Chairman, to suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the bid award with Hillbush Ford and authorize Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office to purchase a total of 12 2020 Ford utility police interceptor, interceptor vehicles for a cost of $398,438.80. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
They did indeed.
I will second that comment, and as I have been told, that last one didn't go extremely well either, where they were being shipped in.
We, we did have some issues with the previous bid package on getting the vehicles in here in a timely fashion and intact.
Right. Several of them were damaged in route.
We did have at least one that was totaled out due to damage.
Right, right.
In route, in route on the carrier, yep.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, we move now to the approval of the regular meeting agenda, and you all have that before you. The only change that I have noted is on item 4.4, on tonight's agenda, where we changed the date from July 22nd to 29th. And that would be F5.
Would that change the F5 to the last one?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318, Point 11A and 3. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.